I am not your mayor this evening, um, taking a break. And we have with us tonight, Mr. Teddy Epstein from Oak Tree School. And he is going to, uh, lead the meeting tonight. So, first of all, ask everybody to rise and you're gonna do the pledge of allegiance. Will you ask everybody? Please rise. Please rise.
Please rise for the p- pledge of allegiance.
You start it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Now, the next order of business we do, because we need a whole lot of help. Tonight, we have Pastor Tim Krupsky from Lord of Life Lutheran Church, also one of our police department chaplains, and he's going to, uh, give us a word of prayer, alright?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, in this evening hour, we look back at the hours of this day and we thank you for your providence and care and provision. We thank you that you've blessed our community with growth and with many good things that are coming our way these days. Tonight, we remember as well those who serve us in the community. First of all, we remember our first responders, both police and fire and EMT. We pray for your protection upon them, that you'd bless them and their families, and that, Lord, you would guide and protect us through their care. We pray as well for the mayor and for the city council tonight, as they gather together to discuss and make decisions that will benefit the community. We pray for your wisdom and guidance and all of that. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Tim. You come. You hold on this one speaking. So, everybody, I'd like for you to meet fourth grader from Oak Tree School, right here, Mayor Epstein. And, uh, tell us, how did you get to be mayor?
So, at my school, we have a winter festival every single year, and we have different biddings, and I won the bidding for mayor of the evening.
Just like that?
Mm-hmm.
Wow. So, what do you want to be when you grow up? Mayor?
I might be.
You might be, huh? Good. So, you have Principal Robin Lynch out there. She runs a pretty top school, doesn't she?
Mm-hmm.
Exactly right. Well, hey, we are honored to have you. I have something here for you. This is a proclamation that says, "You are our mayor for August thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen." Teddy Epstein is mayor for an evening due to the school's winter festival. So, therefore, the old mayor, that's me, declare, proclaim that Teddy Epstein is mayor for the day of August thirteenth in the city of Westfield, and call upon all of our citizens to welcome you as our honorary mayor tonight, okay? Alright. Now, part of the ceremony is, at the end, I'm gonna ask you to come up with an ordinance that you want all of your city council to pass, so you gotta be thinking about that. I already proposed one to him about maybe taking two weeks off of school. He said, "No, he likes school." So, Mrs. Lynch would like that. So, you be thinking about that, okay? So, this is for you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Let's go have you run the rest of the meeting. Mr. Epstein, you can take over for a little while.
Alright. Thank you, Mayor Epstein. It's a pleasure to have you with us tonight. At this time, I'd like the clerk to note the presence of a quorum, please. Call the roll.
Here.
Here. Yes, here.
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 Thank you. At this time, there are no changes to the agenda, so it'll stand as printed. And at this time, we will also look to approve the minutes from our July ninth, twenty eighteen meeting. Uh, I entertain a motion. So, move. I have a motion by Joe Edwards. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Horkey. Any additions, changes, comments? Hearing none, I would ask council to approve the minutes as be- as stated for July ninth, twenty eighteen by signify- signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. Minutes are approved, five zero. We also had a special meeting on August second with one item. Uh, I'd asked for a motion to approve the August second, uh, reading of the minutes.
I'll move that we accept him into the record, even though he wasn't at the meeting.
Okay. We have a motion by Bob Horkey, a second by Joe Edwards. Any comments, additions or corrections? Hearing none, I'd ask the council to approve the August second, uh, minutes by signifying by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. And motion carries, five zero. Next item of business is to approve our claims as stated. I entertain a motion for the claims approval.
I move to approve claims.
Okay. I have a motion by Dr. Mark Keen to approve claims as stated. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Joe Edwards. Are there any comments? Hearing none, I entertain a motion, or I entertain a vote to approve claims as stated. Those approving claims as stated, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. Claims are approved, five zero. At this time, it's my pleasure, we are going to have a special presentation tonight by one of our local businesses. Amanda's going to introduce the business to us, and, uh, I understand is it Mr. Travis Jones is here with us. Well, welcome, sir.
So, Amanda Rubidoo, city of Westfield. Um, over the last several months, Mayor Cook has tasked me with going out and meeting with our local business owners to get a better understanding of some of the challenges that they are dealing with and how we can better support them. And through that process, we have learned about some really cool things going on in our city, and we really wanted to have an opportunity to, to tell their story, not only to you, but, but to the community. And so, Travis has agreed to be our first test subject for what we're calling the Business Minute. Uh, so, I don't wanna take any more of his time, but Travis Jones with LHP Telematics.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for the invitation. The businesses, LHP Telematics, were located directly south of the fire station and post office in Tiller Court. Um, we're about a fifteen-person shop at this point in time, doing about four, four-and-a-half million dollars a year on average. Uh, business is doing fantastic for us, so we're actually expanding right now. We're gonna be hiring two to three more people before the end of the year. Now, the first thing everybody says is they say, "What does LHP stand for?", and then they say, "What the heck is telematics?". So, I'll start with telematics, and if we have time at the end, I'll, I'll get to the LHP part. Uh, telematics is basically remote monitoring of some sort of machinery that's out in the field. Uh, now, we specialize in heavy equipment. So, I usually, usually analogy of, if you know GM's OnStar service, um, OnStar gives you an email and it says, "Your tires are low, you need to go to the, go to the service station and get your oil changed", various things like that. What we do is, we do that exact same sort of thing, except for extremely complex, very, very expensive pieces of equipment. So, everything from a dual-engine, five hundred or fifty-million-dollar Manitowoc crane, all the way down to a John Deere zero-turn lawnmower. Um, what we end up doing is, we end up putting a telematics box, that is a cellular-enabled box, out on the equipment, and we start reading data from it. Now, it's a lot more than just location, it's a lot more than just GPS. Yes, we do put a dot in the map, everybody loves a dot in the map, but the real value proposition that we add to our customers is the fact that we could read pretty much any data point off of anything that's on that equipment. So, everything from engine data, transmission data, how the equipment is acting, fault codes, uh, various things like that. And when you have the capability of doing that, and then adding a layer of intelligence onto it, so the device out in the field is actually making intelligent decisions, saying, "I need to go contact the service center because we just saw A and B and C happen on this piece of equipment", that starts adding a lot of value back to the manufacturer, back to the dealer, and to the end customer. Now, we are a little bit different than the vast majority of companies that have the word "telematics" in their name. Uh, we do not sell directly to an end customer of the equipment. We're not selling directly to construction companies. What we do is, we sell to the manufacturer of the equipment or the dealer network. Um, one thing you will notice is, I do have a John Deere logo on the shirt, not an LHP logo. John Deere invested in our business about four, four-and-a-half years ago. So, if you're a construction company and you end up going to a John Deere C&amp;F dealership anywhere in North America, and also in Australia, you not only have the option to buy these types of services that come with the John Deere equipment, you can also buy it for the rest of your entire fleet. So, whether you're a farmer, and you have a bunch of Ford F-150 trucks that you wanna know if they're having faults, or having problems, or if they're, the guy's joyriding down to the bar, or if you're a construction company and you have extremely large, complex equipment, cranes, backos, ditch diggers, various things like that. So, our average customer, roughly sixty percent of our business, is the OEM, and they install it at the factory as a branded OEM service. So, some examples are Manitowoc crane, Link Belt crane, uh, Vermeer with their ditch digging equipment and underground drills. You'll see a lot of those around here, uh, from Miller Pipeline, which does most of the drilling around here. Um, and then, our second tier of customer usually is the dealer network. That's then going out and selling to the same customer that buys the equipment, but for all of their other stuff. So, right now, we have roughly seventeen to eighteen thousand assets under management. So, it's a software-as-a-service-based business, and the reason we ended up moving from Carmel down to Westfield is, we started kitting and shipping telematics devices as opposed to being a pure software company. And if you're up in Carmel, the one thing you'll find out is, if you're looking for office and warehouse space to fire up a kidding operation, you end up finding either a whole bunch of office and not enough warehouse, or a whole bunch of warehouse and not enough office, and then you look at the price tag and you wanna run for the hills. So, as a family, we started out as a family business. Uh, my family business, uh, my father, my brother, and myself still work at the company. Um, and we quickly decided that we needed to branch out and get out of Carmel and start looking at some of the outskirts. Uh, we were able to not only grab three-and-a-half thousand square feet that was literally split fifty-fifty, which was our perfect setup, we were also able to, once the neighbor next door moved out, get that place knock holes in the walls. Now, we're at six-and-a-half thousand square feet, and it looks like we're gonna end up probably needing ten to fifteen thousand square feet by the end of next year, the way business is going. So, our main reason for getting out of Carmel and moving down to Westfield is, the climate to get office space and warehouse space and the right mix at the right price point was extremely good when we started looking around, and it was extremely bad the further you go into town. So, that was our main reason for moving out here. Any, that's, that's my three-to-five-minute quick view, so, uh, usually I talk about this stuff for about an hour on end, so I'm trying to, trying to shorten it down.
LHP.
LHP. So, uh, the ownership of the company is a third, a third, a third Wildcat Systems, which is my family business. That's myself, my dad, and my brother. Uh, LHP Inc., down in Columbus, Indiana, is a software as a s- or not a software as a service, it's a technology software placement firm that focuses on sort of our industry. So, they're into heavy equipment, they're into manufacturing. That's where LHP came from, because they were a lot bigger than us, so they said, "You have to take our name as opposed to keeping the Wildcat Systems name." And then, four-and-a-half years ago, John Deere invested. And, and as you can tell, uh, with any major, major company like that, that's that big, there's fantastic things during an investment, and then there's utterly horrible things during an investment. Sitting through three-hour-long meetings where nothing is decided by the end of the meeting is one of those horrible things. So, I usually get a jumpstart those and basically say, "Hey, we're small and we're gonna go do that, you guys can't tell us anything different." So, that's always a, always a bonus there. Any questions for me?
So, do you, uh, did you start out in the software, or did you dovetail off the company down south?
So, I ha- I have a computer science degree from Purdue. Uh, I actually wrote for the first five years of the business. I wrote the vast majority of the software. It was myself and, and three other people in a room staring at each other up in Carmel. Um, and you quickly find out when you wanna change industry focuses. We were just selling aftermarket asset tracking solutions, usually satellite-based solutions. Uh, not a good business to be in. Uh, we needed to switch. Heavy equipment was what was sort of taken off at that point in time. And, uh, when you go to Manitowoc Crane, which is our first major customer, they said, "Hey, we love what you do, but there's no way they can convince their board to go with a four-man shop out of, out of a very small office." So, that's when we did the first, uh, joint venture from Wildcat Systems and changed to LHP Telematics with them. They put in quite a bit of money along with five employees, so we got big, quick. Uh, luckily, we survived the two thousand eight downturn, 'cause the heavy equipment market got hit really, really hard with that. But now that we're out of that, uh, it's actually going pretty good, and so far, the tariffs have not hit us yet, even though we're sort of in smack dab in the industry that, that those things are gonna start hurting us eventually.
Then, last question. Do, do you manufacture then the, the boxes or the monitoring things, the, the monitor or device that you put on?
No, we, uh, we buy off-the-shelf telematics boxes, along with working with manufacturers to custom build specific ones that we need, but we do all the kitting, configuration, shipping of the devices. So, if you come to our facility back in the warehouse, you'll see cases and cases of these devices. You'll see racks where we configure the devices, test the devices, kit them for specific types of machinery, and then ship them back out after they're entered in our system. Uh, the vast majority of our employees, though, are software or very, very technical people, 'cause that's, that's the, uh, uh, sort of the glue that holds it all together and, and actually makes the sale is the software, not necessarily the box that goes with it.
Well, thank you for investing in our community.
Okay, I, I do have a question. You're gonna have two or three people?
Yes.
I assume that they're going to be highly specialized, uh, in, in the computer industry? So, what, what kind, what kind of-
Well, we just gave a job offer to another local person, uh, for a, a warehouse position. That fills the last warehouse position. The next two people we're gonna hire are software developers.
Okay, is that a very, uh, deep pool of candidates that you will have, or is that going to be fairly restricted at this point in time?
Uh, if you look at the entire area of Indianapolis, when you put a job posting out, 'cause we have one out right now, uh, I've gotten probably forty-five resumes that have came in, and this was using LinkedIn as, as a, as, as the job posting mechanism. Um, if I were to branch out, but now, now that is light compared to what it used to be before Salesforce and some of the downtown places took off. They did suck up quite a bit of the software talent, just in the entire Indianapolis area. But, uh, in general, you can still get good software people around here that, uh, that are looking to move, so.
Great.
Great story. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for having me.
It's great to meet you. Thank you.
Mrs. Rubidoo is making her rounds of the city. She's finding all kinds of interesting endeavors right here in Westfield that we weren't even totally aware of, so that's, that's great to hear. Thank you.
Alright. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll move on into old business. We have three items. We'll start with ordinance seventeen dash fifty-one, Aurora, North Point.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, good evening. For the record, Kevin Todd with the Economic and Community Development Department. The item before you this evening is a request to amend the Aurora PUD district, which would formally rename itself to the North Point PUD district upon adoption of the amendment this evening. This item comes to you with a unanimous favorable recommendation from the Advisory Plan Commission, with the condition that a few tweaks be made to the PUD ordinance, um, and its exhibits. Those changes have been made, and the ordinance before you this evening is eligible for your adoption consideration. The petitioner is here this evening, but he does not plan to make a presentation, but is available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Uh, does council have any questions for the presenter or the petitioner? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve, ordinance seventeen dash fifty-one.
I have a motion by Dr. Mark Keen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Horkey. Any discussion?
What, what were the changes?
Could you go to the staff report? Yeah. The, the last page of the staff report. Yeah, so highlighted here, number one, two, three, and four on this page, um, essentially it's, um, there's a, there's a piece of property in the middle of the Aurora project, um, owned by Mr. Keith Heitman, and that property is now incorporated into the, the North Point project. So, the four changes on the screen, um, include updating the legal description, updating the concept plan, and other associated exhibits to incorporate that property into the proposal.
Was that property acquired from?
Not acquired, just, um, still owned by Mr. Heitman, just part of the zoning petition.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Chuck Lehman. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Alright, thank you. Uh, the next item under old business is ordinance eighteen dash nineteen Liberty Villas, PUD. This is also up for adoption tonight. Mr. Kevin Todd.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, again, for the record, Kevin Todd, Economic and Community Development Department. This item is a request for a new planned unit development called Liberty Villas. Property is located on the south side of one hundred and fifty-first street, immediately west of the Harmony PUD. This item also comes to you with a unanimous favorable recommendation from the Advisory Plan Commission, with the condition that additional plantings be added to the southern buffer yard and shown on the Incorporated Landscape exhibit. Um, those changes have been made, and the ordinance before you this evening is eligible for your adoption consideration. The petitioner is here this evening, um, and like the last one, does not plan to make a presentation, but is available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. This time, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve ordinance eighteen dash nineteen, the Liberty Villas, PUD.
I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Chuck Lehman. Uh, council members, do you have any questions for either our presenter or petitioner, or any questions about the project?
I have a question. Um, thank you. John or Keith? When we, when we reviewed, or when we looked at, um, toured the other project that they have, I think it's Maple Villa, is that right?
Yes.
Are these, are these units pretty much the same as those?
Yes.
Size, texture, everything?
They, they are. The plan is to construct the same homes that are being constructed today in Maple Villas at this location. Um, as specified in the PUD, the, there are, uh, illustrations of those homes, and the ordinance requires substantial compliance with those homes at this proposed location.
Price point the same, roughly?
Uh, it's probably gonna be a tick higher. We anticipate the average sale price to be in the two hundred seventy, two hundred eighty thousand dollar range.
On the, uh, on the concept plan, it appears that you've treated that front entrance or that front pretty much the same as you did, uh, Liberty Ridge, is that correct?
It is the cross-section of one hundred fifty-first street, including the French Place, is identical to the cross-section at Liberty Ridge.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. Any other council comments? Alright, we have a motion before us and seconded. Uh, would the clerk please pull counsel?
To me.
Yes.
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 Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next item before us, uh, was introduced to us July ninth. It's ordinance eighteen dash twenty-seven, Oak Ridge Point, PUD amendment, uh, also known as Bertie's. Uh, Dane, thank you for presenting tonight. This is also up for council adoption.
Good evening, members of the council. For the record, Dane Crabtree with the Economic and Community Development Department. The item before you this evening is ordinance eighteen dash twenty-seven, a proposed amendment to the Oak Ridge Point PUD, specific to the planned Bertie's miniature golf and restaurant property located just west of the existing Speedway gas station at State Road thirty-two and Oak Ridge Road. The proposed amendment modifies a few development standards, as well as the required trail corridor along thirty, State Road thirty-two, from thirty feet to ten feet in width. This item was introduced at the July ninth city council meeting, and had a public hearing at the July sixteenth plan commission meeting, where it also received a unanimous favorable recommendation, is now available for your adoption consideration this evening. Tim Oakes from Ice Miller is present tonight, does not plan to make a presentation, but is available for questions, and I am available if there are questions of staff. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Dane. Uh, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve ordinance eighteen dash twenty-seven.
Motion by Dr. Keen to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Horkey. This time, council, care to comment or have any questions for presenter or petitioner?
I just have one clarification. If, as I see this, this property sits just west of the Wheeler PUD proposed development, is that correct?
It is west and south of that development.
Is it, is it contiguous in any way, so that the roads, I, I'm just wanting to make sure the road development here doesn't dictate the road development that comes up in that PUD? Or, I, it, rather than saying it that way, I wanna make sure that there's some workings so that everything works together, there's not some kind of traffic bottleneck as a result of doing these things independently.
I, I can comment a little bit. So, Wheeler PUD i- is, is to the north and to the east of Speedway, and so, this is to the west of Speedway. So, to the extent that there's any coordination with the Wheeler PUD, it, it's to the east. And, and that has been a topic of discussion as we reviewed the Wheeler PUD.
Tournament Trail. What he was talking about, yes, yes.
It's the, it's the back-
Tournament Trail, yeah.
Yeah.
What about the thirty-two overlay ordinance that's kinda frowns on stuff like this along thirty-two? It's right on, it's right on thirty-two. Plan commission have no trouble with that, or?
Um, are we, are what are you, are you referring to the trail corridor itself, or the use, 'cause the use is already permitted?
The use is already permitted?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other comments? Alright, would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Alright, thank you. That concludes the old business for this evening, and we'll move on into new business. Before us, we have ordinance eighteen dash thirty, a hundred percent voluntary annexation of Osborn Trails Phase Three. Mr. Skelton, this also has a public hearing scheduled for tonight.
Sorry, Mr. President. The, uh, this item is before you for public hearing this evening. It's a voluntary, uh, annexation, one hundred percent, uh, voluntary request. It's about sixteen and a half acres, give or take. Uh, this is phase three of the Osborn Trails annexations. You've already reviewed and approved two of them. Um, if everything goes according to plan, this will be back before you, um, September tenth, along with the fiscal plan, uh, that is part of the normal course of business, uh, also at that meeting. Um, with that, I'm happy to respond to any questions. The I, the area that I'm showing with my mouse right here is the portion that is under consideration for this evening, and this was the last portion that you just finished.
So, we are not annexing those along Six Point, those residences along Six Points Road?
I, I didn't hear the first part.
We are, I take it from the map that we are not annex- We are, I take it from the map that we are not annexing the three or four residences right there on Six Points?
Yeah, I believe this is just open farm ground.
Well, there's houses on them.
Not, not on, I don't believe there is.
I'm talking about those houses on Six Point, where the, it's not.
Yeah, I'm not aware that we're annexing any of that, I mean, I think we're just annexing the portion that I'm pointing to right here. I mean, that's what's before you this evening.
Okay. Any other questions for Matt? Hearing none, at this time, I will open the public hearing at seven thirty-one. Do we have anybody that would like to address this issue during the public hearing? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at seven thirty-two. This is a council introduction, do counselors have any further comments before this moves on to the APC? Or this doesn't go to the APC, it'll be back to us September, September tenth, I'm sorry, just wanted to correct the record there. All right, hearing none, we'll move on to ordinance eighteen dash thirty-two, Trails PUD Amendment Number Two, Kevin Todd.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council again for the record, Kevin Todd with the Economic and Community Development Department. This item before you is a proposed amendment to the Trails planned unit development, which is located on the south side of State Road thirty-two, generally between Oak Ridge Road and the Monon Trail. The proposal would add commercial uses to the southern portion of the project, modify sign requirements for the center, and modify a few of the development standards for the commercial lots along State Road thirty-two, specifically Lot Three. This item is scheduled to receive a public hearing at the Advisory Plan Commission on August twentieth, and will return to you at a later date for adoption consideration. At this time, the petitioner's representative, Mr. Jesse Pullman, is here and would like to make a brief presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, President, members of the council, good evening, Mayor Epstein, how are you tonight? Good. My name is Jesse Pullman with On Point Land Matters, I'm here this evening to present on behalf of Birch Dalton and Edrock Development. Birch wasn't able to be here this evening. As noted in the application materials, the requested amendment addresses three specific topics with respect to the Trails. The first and the primary item is to accommodate the pending crew car wash development plan, which is on Lot Three of the development. As that site plan has gone through the tack review process, it's been brought to our attention that although the property mainly east is shown for commercial development long-term under the comprehensive plan, it is currently zoned agricultural, so as a result, this amendment will allow for that site plan to be developed as shown, without the buffer yard that would otherwise be required. The site would still have the perimeter parking lot landscaping that would accommodate what would typically be a commercial project, abutting a commercial project. The second item is to allow commercial uses on the southern half of the development, which as you may recall, when this property was first zoned back in two thousand fifteen, commercial uses, including a family entertainment center, were contemplated on that portion of the real estate, but then in two thousand sixteen, it was zoned to be only apartments, as the outlots were then zoned also at that time. So, the amendment would allow for commercial uses to be developed on that property moving forward, while still maintaining the apartment uses as a potential permitted land use. And then the last and final item is to incorporate a monument sign plan for the development. The standards that were included in this are consistent with those that were recently approved by the council for the adjacent Monon Marketplace to the east. One of the challenges we're seeing in the community with the city's required access road in the thirty-two corridor is that that access road is pushing the back pieces further back from State Road thirty-two, so potential users have had concern about visibility and access to the property. So, the monument sign plan will help address that. In addition, we believe that particularly in this location, that will provide some additional assistance to traffic circulation for visitors to the community that are not as familiar with the area. So, with that, if you have any questions or comments, as we move forward to the Plan Commission public hearing next week, I'd be happy to take those with us, otherwise, thank you for your consideration.
All right, thank you. And Lot Four is where you've designated the family entertainment center?
It would be permitted on Lot Four and Five, both Lot Four and Five would be amended to permit commercial uses. Currently, Lot Four is, is specifically a lot that's being considered for that use.
Thank you for that clarification. Any questions for Mr. Pullman? All right, hearing none, thank you. All right, next item up for discussion is ordinance eighteen dash thirty-three, Grand Park Village, PUD Amendment Two, Charlestown at Grand Village.
Dane? Evening again, council, for the record, Dane Crabtree with the Economic and Community Development Department. The item before you this evening is the introduction of ordinance eighteen dash thirty-three, a proposed amendment to the Grand Park Village, PUD, specific to a piece of property on the west side of Wheeler Road, north of the intersection of Grand Park Boulevard and Wheeler Road. The proposed amendment proposes modification to design theme, density, and parking and landscaping standards to accommodate a multifamily development that contains seventeen buildings, fifteen which are apartment buildings. The item will have its public hearing at the September fourth Plan Commission meeting, and will return to you at a later date for a vote. Michael Roan from Freeman Development Corporation is present to make a brief presentation on behalf of the applicant. After the presentation, I will be available if there are questions of staff, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, again, for the record, my name is Mike Roan, R-O-A-N, with Freeman Development Corporation in Richmond, Indiana. We are coming in for, as, as explained, Charlestown at Grand Park Village. Here's Block One that surrounds the lake, the Grand Park Village Lake. We're contemplating the development of twelve acres at the eastern edge of the block, and to the west Wheeler Road, and is identified here, directly south of the Well Point property, a little hundred and eighty-sixth. It's a twelve acre property, we're contemplating two hundred and forty-four units, with the breakdown as shown, one hundred and eight one bedroom, one hundred and twenty-one two bedroom, and fifteen three bedroom, along with the approximately sixty-one square foot clubhouse. Amendments provided will be the Village Lake boardwalk that will surround the entire Village Lake and connect this to commercial and office and other uses as the village develops out. We have direct frontage on the Monon Trail, we'll also have resort-style pool, twenty-four hour residence secured business and fitness facilities. We have an urban garden facility that we're contemplating along the trail, and we're lining the front of the lake with large pergola swings to increase some activity along the trail and the lake, and integrate to the rest of the village. Sort of atypical to a lot of multifamily development in the county and the region. We're pushing a lot of our architects who are up on Wheeler Road and up on the water to kinda create a bit of a streetscape along Wheeler, and, and along the waterfront, and try to eliminate that street parking building relationship that is fairly typical in the industry, but a lot of people are getting away from. We are providing stormwater best management practices in the parking, this is a lot of, a lot of pervious on this site, there's only two spots, where we really have a real high concentration of parking, and they're both broken up by stormwater BMPs in the form of rain gardens, native plants, that break up that large field of parking. We do have fifty private parking garages allocated throughout the site, we've placed all those, you can't see any from the street or the water, trying to keep a little bit of the front of the house architecture from all points and all six sides of the property. And we have provided infrastructure that'll integrate with the rest of the development as it comes online to the north and the south, in the form of our parking infrastructure and our trail system, our interior walkways. A couple changes have come to the site since we've gone through with the staff in subsequent meetings. This building thirteen and this drive aisle to the north have been flipped. Sort of integrates with the holdings of Main, Method Sports Medicine and Cornerstone a little bit to the north. And the fire chief wants to provide a loop around the entire site, so we've broken up the clubhouse and the pool. There's a twelve-foot wide landscape paper drive aisle through there. We have it blocked off with columns and gates, so people can't drive through them, but the firemen can get a truck around there, God forbid he ever needs to. We've been working pretty closely with Hanky Development through all this, and the landowner, and trying to identify an architecture that we feel complements what the PUD is asking for, and this has gone under constant review through Hanky Development and D and W Farms. We've come through in phases with some sketches, I think last time I was here was with another application. This is sort of where I left you last time. Really nicely detailed drawings of an apartment building that might be, and getting those approved. We've gotten to our final elevations of what we think's a pretty nice architecture for the village, and still meeting the PUD. All of this is sort of leading into the text amendments we're gonna request. The first, all four of them I would classify as housekeeping, two of them as identified by staff, and two that we're bringing forward as part of the application. The first was recommended by staff is to supplement the PUD with our architectural character study, to just lend a little bit of specificity to the project, since we're bringing a specific elevation in for our tack review. The second is site-specific for densities. The PUD calls for a maximum number of multifamily units, but it doesn't specify units per acre, for instance. So, we're trying to provide a unit per acre that will meet what we're proposing, but still stay at a better level that's been reviewed and approved with different products, at a different use, in a similar use across town. And some technical stuff, how many units per building. The third amendment is the parking standard. There's some, this, this was one that we brought forward, there's some vagaries between the PUD and the UDO. The, the parking is sort of broad in its definition in the PUD, and we feel that given the unit mix in this, in this project, there's a lot less bedrooms than would be contemplated, maybe with the UDO specifies for multifamily development. So, we're coming forth with a, with a parking standard for the PUD. And the last is the landscape standard. This is a little unusual, there are no adjacent use setbacks or buffers required. In fact, you can build right up to the property line and join to the building across the property line. There are no street front setbacks required in this part of the PUD. And again, there's a bit of a vagary, it encourages sort of an integrated mixed-use product in the PUD, but refers back to a UDO that maybe calls for a landscaping standard for multifamily that is contrary to what the PUD is outlining. And with that, I'll leave it for any questions anybody has.
All right, thank you, Mike, we appreciate your presentation tonight. Counselors, do you have any questions?
You spoke of the parking, is it, is some of it covered parking, or what?
We have fifty covered, covered parking spaces.
In the entire project?
Correct.
Most of it's outside?
Most of it's outside, yeah. Fifty under roof, and we try to keep all the parking underneath a residential footprint, trying to get away from the individual one-story parking garages that kinda scatter the perimeter of a lot of projects.
Any other comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir, Mr. Lehman.
Mike, you showed a couple of primary cuts on the front, right?
Yeah, we have a sort of a main street entrance here that will, probably a better shot of the back here, that'll lead, main entry, point back to the clubhouse and, and the concentration of buildings here. Secondary cut approximately eight hundred feet to the northeast, that'll serve all the density to the northeast. Just sort of dilutes traffic egressing onto Wheeler, gives the fire department a secondary place to come in and out.
So, that was my next question, that's about eight hundred feet of separation?
Approximately, yes.
From the southern one to the roundabout, just roughly?
Do you hear? Oh, two, oh, I'm sorry, to one hundred and eighty-first?
Yeah, just roughly.
Twenty-five hundred feet.
Are you gonna connect then to the north?
To?
For access?
To the parcels to the north?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've worked pretty closely with MSM Cornerstone on these. We currently, they have three lots that align the north. There's an ingress egress easement that goes across all three of those, that connect those all the way up to one hundred and eighty-sixth. It honors any developments as platted today, and if there's lots that ever consolidate, it still would give us the opportunity to connect one hundred and eighty-sixth through their site. But our drive aisle to the north and the south all line up within three feet of the property line, so when those do come online, we can connect across the property line, and essentially create a frontage road along Wheeler, in the form of a sixty-foot parking bed.
If all goes well, when's groundbreaking?
June nineteenth. It's a function of weather. We, we're a family-owned business, we do one project at a time. I believe that allows us to do it well, and we will be wrapping up a project late fall this year in Avon, and at that point, we hit, we hit weather that you wouldn't wanna break ground in.
Thank you.
Anybody else, council? All right, thank you, we appreciate your introduction tonight. The last item of business is ordinance eighteen dash thirty-five, oh, no, it's the second to last, eighteen dash thirty-five Andover, PUD Amendment, Caleb.
Thank you, President, good evening, council. For the record, Caleb Ernest with Economic and Community Development Department. The item presented for introduction is an amendment to the Andover Planned Unit Development District. This item is located at eighteen three seven seven Shady Neck Road, just west of where one hundred and eighty-sixth Street intersect, intersects Shady Neck Road. The amendment proposes incorporating an additional twenty-two acres into the existing Andover PUD. This proposal, this proposal will have the same development and architectural standards as the original Andover PUD, and as modified in the proposed ordinance eighteen dash thirty-five exhibit, which has been provided to you. This proposal also increases the total number of dwellings permitted by thirty-six. The public hearing is slated for September fourth, and will be back to you on October eighth for adoption consideration. Stephen Harden of Fager Baker Daniels is here to present details of the project, and I'm available if council has any questions for staff, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the city council, mayor, Mr. Skelton, and acting mayor, good to see you there. For the record, my name is Steve Harden, I'm a partner in the law firm of Fager Baker Daniels, and I'm pleased to be here representing Langston Development, from Langston Development. Mr. Jim Langston is here in the audience with us, and as Caleb mentioned, this is a, let's see, do I have a controller? Just to flip between, thank you, sir. So, this is twenty-two point four acres that would be added into the Andover PUD ordinance. Area B is in the area which is kind of in the southern half of the project already, and so this would be incorporating those standards to apply to this area. The homes here are expected to range between three hundred and seventy-five and six hundred thousand dollars, just like the homes are out there today in Area B. The plan would be to begin development activity in the spring of two thousand nineteen, and complete this section at the fall of two thousand nineteen. The only change to the standards that would be included here from the existing Area B would be for the side yard setbacks, they're currently eight feet on each side, with an aggregate of sixteen. What we would like to be able to propose, include here, is that if it's a side-load garage, to be able to reduce that down to five feet on that side, with, as long as we're maintaining an aggregate of sixteen. So, it's exactly the same standards, but one of the things that the builders learned as they were going through the original Area B, that that would provide a little bit better flexibility for the streetscape. Other than that, those are all the same standards, and we respectfully request your, any guidance or thoughts you might have, otherwise, we'll proceed to the Plan Commission, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harden. Council have any comments? All right, hearing none, thank you. All right, next is the Resolution eighteen one eleven, State Route thirty-two access Oak Ridge Point. This is up for adoption consideration tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President, we haven't done one of these in a little while, so I'll just cover why this is before you, but in our State Highway thirty-two overlay zone requirements, even if the state grants a permit for a road cut, you folks reserve the right to approve specifically road cuts, any new road cuts along State Highway thirty-two as, as part of that overlay. This proposal is on the southwest corner of Oak Ridge and State Highway thirty-two. You've recently, recently approved a PUD. You've recently approved a PUD that relates to this property, so this should look familiar to you. And what is shown here, this write-in, write-out, right here where my cursor is, is pretty much the same as what was included in the concept plan associated with the PUD that you approved, so no surprises. I think in the resolution, they're required to pretty much build insubstantial compliance with what's shown before you this evening.
All right, thank you. If counsel recalls, there were originally proposed two curb cuts on Thirty-two, so this narrows it down to one for access.
So they're only going to be able to go one way when they leave?
If they exit onto Thirty-two, they would only go east.
So they can't cross the barrier out there then?
That's the way this is designed, yes. They'd have to be creative.
Are there acceleration, deceleration areas prior to this?
You're asking me to step outside of my comfort zone on the fly? I can, it probably does. I'm sure it does.
I would think.
Phil's nodding.
Yeah, good. Yes, it does.
Okay.
All right, good questions. Thank you. Any others? All right, I entertain a motion.
So move.
Yeah, a motion by Joe Edwards. Your motion is to approve?
Yes.
Thank you. I have a motion by Joe Edwards to approve resolution eighteen dash one-eleven.
I'll second.
And a second by Mark Keen. Will the clerk please poll counsel?
Jim, eight?
Yes.
Check them.
Yes.
Stop working.
Yes.
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 All right, thank you. At this time, residents who wish to address the council on non-agenda items may do so. Would anybody care to address counsel at this time? All right. Hearing none. Does city council have any comments? Bob, do you have anything from APC that you'd like to share?
APC met in this room last week. We had a final approval via a consent agenda for the Community First Bank that's going to be using one part of that write-in, write-out that we just acted on. We also sent a favorable recommendation, which we've already acted upon tonight, for the Aurora North Point PUD, ditto for Liberty Villas. We had public hearings on cottages on East. Two folks came and spoke. We had a public quiet on one hundred and eighty-first Street PUD because nobody spoke, and about forty-five minutes, we were out the door.
All right, very good.
Agenda.
Thank you. Colts Camp has been very successful. I hope everybody's had a chance to get out there. It's fantastic. We still have a couple of days, one night left, I guess, for evening practice. Any others?
I do think our staff should be commended for the job they're doing out there, too. They're doing a phenomenal job.
Absolutely.
I do have a comment, too. It's getting into budget adoption time and budget hearings, so I would hope that we can do something to really get people invited to the public here for the budget. You know, I think most of us have reviewed financial documents. We know the AV's grown by a phenomenal amount. We have some interesting decisions to make and some challenges because of the state restriction on growth, but I do think that people should, I mean, I hope we can some way communicate what good shape this city is in from a fiscal standpoint. The investments that have been made are bearing fruit at this point in time, and we're moving forward, and we have some things to deal with, but the idea of tax caps and needs from our public service, public safety sectors are things that challenge us, but I do think that it would be nice if a lot of the community members would come and hear the good news about our fiscal situation, but also the challenges that we face. It's not a simple thing. So I just say that because I know that that season is upon us now.
All right, thank you for those comments, Mark. It's very true. Any other counsel comments? Hearing none. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Dr. Keen, that was a great point. You know, we've, budget season is boring to many and most. It's your job to oversee it. I know several of you serve on that committee, work diligently with Tammy and John and Todd. We bring in Greg Garretaz, as we have every year in this administration, to bring us an outside input and to update our five-year fiscal plan, which we do that every year. So, yeah, we're in, we're moving in very good direction, and we'll do everything we can to get that properly conveyed. And of course, budget will be presented to you here soon, and we'll go through that entire legislative process, so. A couple of not-so-fun notes. I know our fellow citizen and counselor, Joe Edwards, has experienced a very terrible time here in the last, what, Joe, forty-five days? Not only?
Last thirty days.
Thirty days. Joe not only lost a son to cancer, but also just last week, I believe, lost his one-hundred-year-old mother. So, Joe, our prayers are with you, and you know what it's like to have the city behind you. I think you've seen it, and you and I have been sharing those words here in the past few weeks. Unfortunately, as some of you are aware, our family also suffered a terrible loss not quite a month, or just a little over a month ago, where our fourteen-year-old grandson, Zachary Harrison Hyde, was killed in an automobile accident. It's a life-changing situation, but I want to tell you that, like, I know Joe felt the backing of our Westfield city employee family, of our citizens of Westfield, the prayers and the hugs and the cards and the visits and the emails and the phone calls have literally been overwhelming, and it makes all the difference to us. And I know on behalf of my entire family, Susan, my daughter and her husband, Ben and Brian, their wives, and all of the remaining cousins, your presence has been felt. We are most grateful and thank all of you for your support. It goes a long, long way, believe me. You mentioned out of Colts. If you haven't been out of camp, you've got five more opportunities, Tuesday evening, no, four, Tuesday evening, Wednesday's off, Angie smiling, Thursday afternoon, and then Friday afternoon and Saturday afternoon, and on Friday, are the Ravens here on Friday also?
Yes.
Okay.
Those days.
Is that right? So Friday and Saturday, the Baltimore Ravens are going to be right here in little tiny Westfield scrimmaging the Colts, so we expect a big time. The only thing better, I guess, could be New England, and maybe we can arrange that next year, but the turnout has been phenomenal. We more, we've had more visitors in our first week than the Colts had in their entire session at, three-week session at their last location. So we're very proud of that, and our staff has just totally outperformed themselves so far. Smithers, you're not done yet. We have a few more days. All of our volunteers, we have some two hundred volunteers from the city in our public safety and our Westfield welcome, and I can tell you, I speak with the Colts' management almost every day, and they continue to assure me that they are very, very happy, and nothing could be more pleasing than to hear that, because if they weren't happy, I'm sure they tell me that, too. They are not bashful people. So that is going well. Visit us in the next four days, if you would. Also, we're very grateful to Hamilton County. They have turned over for a long-term use for us, a rather large, black, stealth-looking vehicle parked out in Lot E that is being used as our public safety headquarters out there. And we have really converted it into a present-day working. Joe Lyons has worked very, very hard on that to protect the, both the fire and medical and the police headquarters out at Grand Park with all kinds of cameras, et cetera, and it itself is in itself something to really take a look at that. So, Joe, great job on that, and I know that we're grateful to Hamilton County for that. School obviously kicked off this last week. Hopefully, you were reminded with the Orange Ballards as you approach the twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five mile-an-hour zones. Throughout the summer, the schools and the city and Chief Rush have worked diligently together in light of the school safety issues, the city in cooperation with the schools, and our cooperative working together has just, has just been really phenomenal. But the city's part, we will be adding additional school resource officers, an additional one this year. I believe we're adding another one in January. Is that right, Joe? And we'll continue that, especially we get through the budget process. It's not inexpensive, but it is a priority with us. In a move that I think will be very promising and effective, Chief Rush has established sub-offices, if you will, of the police in every school, and will be identified as such, where we are urging our officers who generally, they have a lot of paperwork to do, as you can imagine, and sometimes they'll be in a parking lot or back at station or something. We're encouraging these officers to do their reporting work in the school itself, put your car right out in front, be in the building, and they will, the schools have been very cooperative. They're allowing us space so the officers can work in there, and that we think that'll really have a huge presence of officers in our school buildings. And of course, we pray that we can continue to put off the fear of all of our communities and in the school safety. So good work on that and the public safety end, so. And counsel, thank you for supporting our endeavors to add officers where we need to do so.
Well, thank you as well, Mayor. There was a change in time for, there was some confusion. Is there a change in time for the Colts Camp tomorrow? Do you know? Six fifteen?
Six fifteen.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Off Wednesday, Thursday?
One thirty.
One thirty. Friday and Saturday are?
One thirty.
One thirty. Okay. Big crowds this weekend.
Good.
Now, your actual mayor may have an ordinance or two he'd like for you to consider, so we'll see what he has come up with. What would you like for the council to rule on for you?
What would you like? An extra day of school? Huh? You want an extra day of school? Yes.
Dr. Keen would love that, you know? Okay, so counsel, he's asking you to make a motion to add an extra day of school.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I would love to entertain that motion, as would counsel, but the governing body of such would be the school board. And I think, I think they might take a rare exception if we stepped into their court and authorized an extra day of school, and I'm not sure, you might want to consider your constituents and future voters as to whether they might like another day of school as well, but I encourage you to take that up with the school board. What do you think, counselors?
So now you see what I experience.
I agree wholeheartedly.
I ask the council for something, and they say no. It happens to me all the time, so now you know what it's like to be mayor. How's that?
Just take it under advisement.
We'll take it, we'll take it under advisement, Mayor Epstein. Thank you very much for presiding over tonight's meeting. We appreciate having you here. You run an excellent meeting, sir. We've done fairly well, and we'll be out of here.
When he says adjourn.
So I would ask council members to make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion by Bob Horkey as second.
Second.
Saying by Joe Edwards. All those in favor of adjournments signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned.
Good boy.
There you go.
Nice job, sir. Huh? That's great. Thank you for being here.
Boy, you were pushing the envelope tonight. You got a hot, you were pushing the envelope. You were pushing all the papers down here and getting everybody going.
Oh, well, Joe took him, so I let him.
That's right. Oh, Joe's the one, okay. All right.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much, because evidently, I can't be trusted.